Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the May 9th City Council Meeting for the City of Citrus Heights, and I've asked Councilmember Steve Miller to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, next item, please.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Slowey is absent. Mayor Bruins.
Present.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;U verse cable systems. This meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.citrusheights.net. Today's meeting replay is on Saturday, May 11th at 6:00 PM and Monday, May 13th at 9:00 AM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
With approval.
Second.
If we move it in second to approve the agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, it carries. Next item.
Next item is presentation number four, proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming May 19th through 25th, 2019 as National Public Works Week.
I believe we have a staff presentation to begin. You have the proclamation. I will bring it in a moment. Did you want to see it now?
If you would like to, to open up.
Well, I thought I would invite staff to maybe make a couple comments and then I'll come on down and we'll do the presentation.
So, good evening, Regina Cave, General Services Department, and with me is Stu Hodgkins, City Engineer. And so, before you do the proclamation, we just want to recognize our General Services Department as we recognize National Public Works Week. There are thousands of cities, counties, and townships all throughout the United States that over the next few weeks will be declaring May 19th through the 25th as National Public Works Week. This is a big momentum for not only City of Citrus Heights, but for all of our communities to really recognize all of the work that our public works professionals do on a daily basis. We know that public works is not as attractive sometimes as police and as fire, but nonetheless, we are still equally as important to providing the safety services to our community and our residents and are in fact considered as first responders. So, without further ado, I was going to have Stu go ahead and do our introductions.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to start here, of course, with Regina Cave, our Operations Manager, and handles our street maintenance and actually a lot of other things. Chris Myers, who is our Facilities and Grounds Manager. Next to him is Darcy Carpenter, and I told her I was going to say her entire title, Events Technician, Community Center. Mario Cruz, who is our Facilities and Grounds Maintenance Person, or one of them. Kathy Abarka, who is one of our Program Assistants in General Services. Next to her is Michelle, oh my goodness.
Parker.
Parker. I'm thinking of Mary's initials, sorry. M-E-P, Mary. She is also one of our Program Assistants in Engineering. To my left is Daniel Zombie Cruz. That comes, that nickname comes from his second job. Besides an engineer, he's also the bassist for the Volantolds.
Good bassist.
So, I had to get that one in there. And I should acknowledge, actually Kathy also played lead guitar for the Volantolds as well, so. But I didn't come up with a good nickname for her. Then, we have Brian.
Row.
Row. Like Ty Row. But he doesn't do dirty jobs. Brian is our field, he's one of our Field Maintenance Coordinators for all of our streets so forth. Randy Keen, to his left, is our Maintenance, or our, excuse me, our Public Works Inspector. Handles a lot of our development project inspections and encroachment work. Mary Poole, our Operations Manager, as you all know, and kind of runs RT, deals with garbage, does many, many other things. And we have Michelle Sario, who is here and is also, as Darcy, is one of our Event Technicians over at the Community Center. And this is a small representation of our department, General Services, and these people are kind of the gamut across what we do for the community.
Well, why don't you stay there for just a minute? Is this live?
Yeah.
So, I can talk to you. Okay. So, you know, you do a variety, so many different things in our city that without you, we really wouldn't be able to function properly. And I've known some of you for a long, long time, and others I just know a little bit, but I want to thank you for all that you do and continue to do to make Citrus Heights a great place to live and work. And it's really exciting that every year we have this opportunity to acknowledge National Public Works Week, and so we are going to issue this proclamation stating that whereas public work services provided in our community in the City of Citrus Heights are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient delivery and operation of public work systems and programs such as engineering, street maintenance, landscaping, traffic operations, urban forestry, solid waste and disposal, recycling, sewer collection and treatment, stormwater, fleet and facilities maintenance, and emergency preparedness and response. Also, the health, safety, welfare, and quality of life of the City of Citrus Heights residents greatly depends on all the services that you provide. And the quality and effectiveness of these services, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of all of you, our public works employees. So, a couple of more whereas's. The Public Works Association has selected, it starts here, as the theme for National Public Works Week this year, which celebrates the vital role public works plays in connecting us all together. As a cornerstone of civilization, public works provides, maintains, and improves the structures and services that assure a higher quality of life for our communities. So now, therefore, it is resolved that the City of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through 25th as National Public Works Week in this city, and we urge all of our residents and civic organizations to equate themselves with the Citrus Heights Public Work Services and Programs and join me, as well as the rest of the City Council, in saluting all of you, our city's dedicated public works professionals. So, thank you all, Stu. I'm going to give this to you on behalf of the department.
Thank you.
And we're going to get a picture taken, so now we can all go up. And if the council began, it's only...
It's French, I know.
You need to email me when it's a no tie day.
Smile.
Which one?
Close to them.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you very much.
I almost came in jeans.
Yeah.
Thank you once again to all of them for staying after a full day's work today to be honored. So, now we have one more presentation, I believe?
Yes, the next item is presentation number five, Presentation on SACRT Forward New Transit Network.
Good evening, Mayor Bruins, Member of the City Council, Mary Poole with the General Services Department, and I'm here tonight to introduce James Boyle from Sacramento Regional Transit. He's the Director of Planning, and he is going to provide an update of the SACRT Forward Project and its upcoming launch of the new network. And I will turn it over to James, and he will introduce his team as appropriate.
Great. Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the Council. My name is James Boyle. I'm the Director of Planning at Sacramento Regional Transit. And before I get started, I would like to introduce some staff who's here with me as well. We have our Assistant Vice President of Planning and Scheduling, Carmen Alba, and we have our Director of Marketing, Jessica Gonzalez, and she'll be speaking after me. So, I'm excited to be here tonight to talk to you about SACRT Forward. SACRT Forward is basically a bus redesign effort that we did at Sacramento Regional Transit, and I'm sure Councilmember Steve Miller remembers it very well when we brought it to the board back in February. But this was a very large undertaking. It's a huge deal to redesign an entire bus network, and that's what we did. There are a lot of things that led to this, to RT considering, you know, taking a holistic look at our bus network. There are lots of things changing in the transit and transportation industry. Ridership on transit across the country has been in decline, so there's lots of things happening, and so we felt at RT that we really needed to kind of take on this issue and address this issue. So, we began our bus redesign efforts. It's been basically over 30 years since RT did a holistic redesign of its bus network. There have been times where we've started building light rail or added light rail extensions that we went back and made some minor tweaks to the bus routes, but there really hasn't been a wholesale change in RT's bus routes in three decades, so that's quite a long time. So, I'm going to move through the presentation. I don't want to take too much of your time, but we do have, I have a lot I'd like to share with you. Real quick, just an overview of RT's existing network. We operate approximately up to 70 bus routes, and these include our all-day fixed route buses. This includes commuter buses. This includes special trip buses. This includes a lot of our contracted services as well. We operate buses and transit 365 days a year, so there's no holiday for RT, and especially for our operators and maintenance folks. We have, in our fleet, 192 buses powered by compressed natural gas. We operate, we have 31 community bus vehicles, and those, as you may recognize, can consist of the Smart Ride vehicles. We consider those community bus vehicles. Our service hours range basically from 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM. We have over 3,500 bus stops scattered throughout our service area, and we have a very large service area, and this is part of the reason we decided to take this project on and look at redesigning our network. Our service area covers close to 400 square miles. That's a very large service area for a bus network. And our average daily boarding's on bus, and I'll give you the latest and greatest figure here, we recorded up to 36,000 trips in April of 19, so just last month, and that's actually a slight uptick in ridership, so something's going right here. So, going through our process, it's important to just, to look at the system how it exists, and so I wanted to give you just a very brief snapshot on our system and some of our routes. And the bar chart you see in front of you, basically groups those routes that are our highest ridership, our best performing routes, in yellow, and you can see Route 51, we get over 3,000 boardings a day on that particular route. And then we drop off into the 2000s and then into the 1,000 boardings per day on a particular route.
James, I got to stop you and just mention.
Sure.
Route 1 is Citrus Heights.
Yes, Route 1 is, comes through Citrus Heights, and it does very well. We get a lot of, we get a lot of good ridership in Citrus Heights and on Route 1 in particular. So, the yellow routes are those in our system that perform very well. And then, the blue colors you see, those are routes in our system that currently perform, they underperform. So, they're fixed route bus routes, but the ridership is quite low on those routes and the productivity. And by productivity, I mean, how many passengers are exiting and entering the bus per hour? And so, this kind of gives you just a snapshot. This is not all of our routes. These are the top 10 and goes towards the bottom 10 in terms of routes.
You got one in the bottom 10, too.
Yes, you do. Route 24 is one of our lowest performing routes, and so, and then Route 28 also doesn't do very well, and we'll talk a little bit about that. So, productivity, I mentioned this earlier, and really, this is how transit agencies measure or look at, how is a particular route performing? It's easy just to look at total ridership, but you want to look at ridership versus how many hours a day is that bus in operation? So, one way we measure that is what we call productivity. And standards vary by different types of transit service, so for RT and for our presentation, we focused on bus. So, our fixed route bus, 20 passengers per boarding hour is a standard for RT, for our fixed route. And then, our CBS, our smaller buses that operate on fixed routes, the boarding per vehicle hour is about 15. So, what this scatter chart shows you is it groups routes together based on productivity and also based on frequency. So, the X-axis, if you look across the bottom of the chart, these are frequencies. So, 15 means a bus is coming by your bus stop every 15 minutes. And then, 30 minutes, a bus comes every 30, and then all the way out to 60. So, every hour, there's a bus coming by your stop, and then even a little bit further out. And then going up, the Y-axis, these are the numbers that represent productivity. So, you have 10 passengers per hour, 20 passengers per hour, and 30 passengers per hour. So, you can see, most of the routes that I showed you in the previous slide that have really high ridership, they're also very productive. So, they get a lot of turnover, they get a lot of ons and offs, and those routes all run 15 minutes. So, really good frequency as an industry standard tends to lead to better and higher ridership for that particular route. Then we move to a grouping of our routes that run every 30 minutes, and then you can see there's a grouping of all the routes that run basically every hour. So, there is some overlap between the 30-minute frequencies and the hourly frequencies, so not every hourly route is terrible, and not every 30-minute frequent route is good. So, it just kind of depends on where it falls, but this is how we measure, how is a route performing? So, when we were going through our process and we were looking at redesigning our network, there's, there's a lot of principles that transit planners take into consideration when they look at designing a bus network or a transit system. So, for bus route, for bus route design, there are several key criteria that we look at in terms of, what's the best way to build a bus route? So, we look at things like linearity, and this picture here shows you, you know, buses traveling in a very linear fashion, arterials, think of your arterials, like running buses on arterials. Density, what is the development like around those bus routes, around bus stops? How dense is it in terms of residential density and commercial density? Is the corridor walkable? We can have the best frequent bus routes out there, but if we don't have accessibility and walkability with bus, with sidewalks and crosswalks, your ridership really isn't going to be as good as it probably could be. Proximity, how close are things together on that route? So, again, that kind of goes back to density. Strong anchors. So, we look at some of our best routes in the RT system, they have really strong anchors, you know, some of them connect to either like Sunrise Town Center, or to Watt IED Light Rail Station, or to SAC Valley Station in downtown. Frequency. Frequency is a big one, and this is, this is a key factor that a lot of people focus in on, especially when we talk about trying to attract riders to our transit system. Transit needs to be competitive. In order for people to decide, I'm going to not drive my car and I'm going to take the train or the bus, you want to be competitive in travel time. So, frequency is important. People who are not going to, or choose not to drive, they want to know that a bus is going to come every 10 minutes, every 15 minutes, even every 30. Reliability, this has to do with how well the system's performing, so on-time performance, are the buses running late, where's my bus, you know, those kinds of things. So, that's on the transit agency. It's our job to make sure that our system is reliable. And then, no good route design happens without public input. So, in our project, in SACRT Forward, we had about a two-year process where we started our public outreach early, and we did it often, and we were all over our service area. We had scores and scores of presentations. We came up to Citrus Heights and had meetings up here in Citrus Heights, all over our service area. So, we, we were out and about trying to spread the word as much as we could. So, we hired Jarrett Walker Associates out of Portland, Oregon to come and help us with this project, and so they took us through this, this design effort, and they really did a great job on, you know, relaying some messaging to the RT Board in terms of, you know, how do you best design a network, and do you want a more frequent network, or do you want a network that runs buses basically all over the place? So, those are questions that were put in front of the RT Board to give staff guidance on, what kind of a network do we want to have? And that question basically is, you know, how do we allocate our resources? We only have a finite amount of money that we can spend on operating a bus system, and how are we best going to spend those resources? So, the question is, where are we going to fall on this spectrum of coverage? And so, when we say coverage, we mean, we're thinking about bus access for everybody. So, it doesn't matter if a bus only comes once an hour, or every 75 minutes, there's a bus in close proximity to where you may be. And the complete opposite end of that spectrum is what we refer to sometimes as frequency or ridership. So, think about, instead of being spread out thin, you're focusing your network into a more core network, where you can create a nice, consistent grid of frequent bus routes, and where buses will come every 15 minutes, every 10 minutes, and maybe every 30 minutes. So, that was the big question before RT, and this was the question we took out to the public, and we got a great deal of public input and public feedback. We had over 600 emails and phone calls and letters coming into RT, and our board members heard a lot from the public on this question. So, when we designed our network, we drafted up a network, we took it to our board on December 10th and asked them basically for permission to take this draft network out to the public and receive public comment, and we did that. And so, our, our design of the network basically was, when we came back to the board in February, well, we updated them in January, and then we came back in February, we, we were able to move our spectrum a little. We, we knew that there was not really an avenue for us to cut a whole bunch of coverage, because that meant we would be cutting a whole lot of routes and leaving a whole lot of people outside of RT's service area. So, we didn't want to do that. So, we moved our freak, our little arrows over just a little slightly towards the left, towards frequency. So, we were able to create more frequent network. And so, at the February 25th Board Meeting, after we received a great deal of public comment and feedback and went back and did some iterations and changes to the network, the board adopted the new redesigned network known as SACRT Forward. And so, this is huge. I mean, it was a big deal for RT. It was a two-hour presentation and questions and comments from the public. But adjustments were made to every single bus route, so it touched every bus route in our network. And the key things that we pointed out to our board and that we wanted to make the public understand is that we heard what they were telling us. We heard that people wanted more frequency. 60 minutes, buses coming once an hour, doesn't really work for most people. We heard that people wanted more weekend service, and we also heard that people would like our schedules to be improved and the buses to be more reliable, and so that's what we tried to deliver. And then, we were able actually to invest up to $3 million back into the network, so we were able to put back some routes that we had previously looked at discontinuing, and we continued to make those improvements in frequency and span of service as well. So, the new bus network, what we have here now is, we have 27 fixed regular routes in our new network, and then we have 15 peak hour only routes. So, through our process, we, and I showed you in the charts that we're, there were some routes that ridership was fairly low, but looking at our data, we were able to see that some of those routes have really good ridership during the peak hours. So, people are using them to get to, like downtown, or get to work, and then back home. So, a lot of the routes, we were able to convert to peak hour routes, so we didn't have to basically cut those routes. So, all of the routes that we, that the board adopted and voted on will run seven days a week, except for one. There's one route, Route 33, and that's a very small route that operates in downtown and just north of downtown. It'll, it'll do Monday through Friday, but every other route is seven days a week, and that's a big deal. Because today, more than half of our routes don't operate on Saturday and Sunday, so we have a very disconnected network. People really can't build their lives around a bus network that doesn't run consistently. So, we, we really worked hard to build a consistent network. And then going back to the hourly routes, we tried our best to make sure that we reduced those hourly routes, so we added 45-minute frequencies to some routes. There is one route, Route 19, that still will run at 60 minutes, and that one we consider a more rural route, so 60 minutes is okay for Route 19. We believe that the new network is simpler, it's easier to use, it's easier for people to understand the routes, and we're linear. If you look at our existing network map today, you see routes just kind of spaghettied all over the place. And not only is that, you know, extend your trip time, but it takes, you know, a lot of extra time for those buses to make turns and go through neighborhoods. So, we did a lot of work to try and straighten out some of the routes. And we, the new network also complements the new 15-minute light rail service on the weekends. So, there were some key early wins in our project that we, that we, we recognized, and the board actually voted to add the 15-minute light rail weekend, on, light rail service on the weekends, so that complements our new network. And also, the board voted to institute 25-cent transfers. So, that was one of the early things we recognized is, we were charging people, basically a whole nother fare to do a transfer. So, in order to create a network where you want to run 15-minute gridded service and people have to transfer, but you're going to wait no longer than seven, seven and a half minutes, free transfers are key, but 25-cent transfers are a huge step in the right direction.
And we reduce fares.
Yes, and that's on my list.
Oh, you're getting there, okay.
Yes.
And we reduce fares, so there's been a lot of great things happening at RT.
We went through a really rough time in the late 2000s with, you know, the Great Recession, and we cut over 20% of our service, and our ridership went, so it was not a good time. And things are, things are better at RT, and we're definitely moving in the right direction, and we believe SACRT Forward is just going to improve upon that. So, quickly, I just want to point out some of the big changes. For, for us, this, this particular table shows frequency on weekdays. So, you see routes that run 12 to 15 minutes. We go basically from 10% of our service to 15%. And the biggest changes really are the routes that run 20 to 30 minutes. In today's weekday network, that's about 46% of our service, but we pushed that up to 74% in the new network. And then, the 60-minute headways, this is a huge decline. This is good. So, today, almost 44% of our routes operate once an hour, the bus comes by your stop. In our new network, we pushed that down to 3.7%, so that's a huge improvement on weekdays. And then, I forgot, it's animated. So, frequency on the weekends. Weekends were huge improvement in our network, because we were trying to create that consistency, that Monday through Sunday network. So, we did add a great deal of service to the weekends, and you can see here just in the frequencies alone, you know, our Saturday service has gone from 74% of the routes running once an hour to now only 19% of them once an hour. And then Sundays, just about our entire network on Sunday is 90, or 91% of our network is hourly, and we're dropping that down to 50%. So, that's a huge improvement for our riders. The average headway, this is sort of like a compilation total of everything, so as it exists today, our average headway is about 42 minutes, and the new network, we're taking that down to 31 minutes. And then, Saturday also is a pretty big improvement from every 50 minutes to every 42 minutes. So, for Citrus Heights, I wanted to just include a slide that focused a little bit on Citrus Heights and kind of what this means for Citrus Heights. And Citrus Heights actually fared very well in our redesign. We, we were able to identify some routes that we could merge with other routes that would make them better. For instance, Route 95, you don't see it on the map, but we've merged it basically in with Route 93, and we were able to improve frequency and service and span of hours on that particular route. Route 1 stays basically the same, but we have added trips to Route 1, so there will be a little bit more service on Route 1. And then, Route 25, Route 23 have stayed. There were some slight changes to Route 25 in terms of where it, instead of going to Sunrise, it goes up to Lewis Orlando, and we were able to add more service and frequency on those routes as well. So, what you will not see, Route 28 basically was almost parallel to Route 21. And if we go back to the previous chart where we showed ridership, Route 28 was on that lower spectrum. So, you know, in a project like this, it's impossible to steer away from discontinuing service on certain routes, and, you know, we, we tried our best to do the best we could, and we've made a strong effort to reach all of our riders, to help our riders understand what this new network means for them, and for those riders who use Route 28, we want to help them to know how to get to Route 21, or how to use Smart Ride for their transit needs. So, the key takeaways from, you know, SACRT Forward are these. It's a more consistent network, seven days a week. It complements our new 15-minute weekend. It complements our new 15-minute weekend light rail service. We have a major reduction in hourly service on routes. We have improved and better weekend service. We are improving our schedules. So we've gone through a really detailed exercise on the timing of our new system, our new routes with light rail, and with other transfer points, and our riders will definitely notice that. We believe that the system is going to be more reliable, it's an equitable system, and really, most importantly, this is a network that we can build on. So while we didn't get, you know, everything we wanted, we were able to build a good base, and we can build from that base. So this network will allow us to do that. And so I know you are very familiar with Smart Ride. I think there's some people here in Citrus Heights that use Smart Ride, like Arthur. So Smart Ride, as you know, has been very popular here in Citrus Heights, and ridership has grown exponentially on Smart Ride. And, you know, we expanded the zone to cover Orange Vale, and to cover Antelope, and it'll also take you to the historic light rail station in Folsom. So it's been very positive here, very positively received. We launched our second Smart Ride zone in South Sacramento, and that one is following in the footsteps of Citrus Heights, so it's very popular, and it does very well. Let's see. Sometimes these things don't move as fast as you want them to, but we'll just move on. Oh, there's the ridership. Smear if you could go back to the ridership one real quick. Anyways, you can see the uptick in ridership there on our Smart Ride zone, and the dark blue is the Citrus Heights Smart Ride Zone, and the light blue is the one that we currently operate in South Sacramento, when we refer to it as Franklin. So it does very well, too. And we are expanding our Smart Ride program as a part of SACRT Forward. There are some new Smart Ride zones that we're going to be adding, to at least have some sort of transit there for folks who may be outside of our fixed route service area. But, you know, we recognize the need for some kind of transit, and Smart Ride really fills that gap. So there's several more Smart Ride zones that we'll be implementing over the next couple of months. So with that, I'm just going to turn it over to Jessica, and she's going to come talk to you about our outreach and marketing efforts.
Hello, good evening. Again, my name's Jessica Gonzalez, I'm the Director of Marketing with SACRT. So I'm just going to share with you a few of our plans, what we've been doing so far, what we have planned to share with the public, and hopefully maybe get your help and advice along the way. So, as you know, the new bus network is launching September 8th, so we are sharing that date with everyone, and making sure that they know. And as James said, some of the things to look forward to, which is better frequency, longer service hours, and especially more weekend service. Okay. So something that we did extensively, when we wanted to hear about what everyone thought of our draft network, was riding the routes. We really found that to be the most successful way to hear feedback from people, because they were sitting there on that route, we got to find out what they thought about it. And so that's what we're back doing. Three weeks ago, we got back out there, started our outreach efforts again. We want to remind people about that September 8th date, and also educate them about what that means for that particular bus that they're riding right then and there. It's been really great to be able to interact with those riders, and hear their thoughts, and also make sure that they understand what's going to happen on September 8th. Some of the things that we are handing out when we're on those, is, on those buses, is we have individual route maps, and this helps give them a summary of how that particular route might be changing, and then also the service hours and the frequencies. So that really helps give them an idea of how their bus route could potentially change. And I have a few handouts specific to Citrus Heights for you guys that I'll give you as well. So here's a look at just some of the outreach materials that we've created. We're continuing to create new materials pretty much every day. But these are some of the materials that we use at our outreach events, so we are scattered throughout Sacramento County, at various different festivals and events that go on. This month, we have at least a couple every week, so we're very busy out there talking to people about SACRT Forward, and getting them prepared. We're also adding new messaging on our buses, so we're trying to just be as colorful and loud as possible, so that we can catch someone's attention while they're riding, because we know nowadays it takes a lot to catch your attention. So messaging on the buses is definitely a big piece of the puzzle for us, to make sure that people know about it, especially our riders. Also this month, we're starting a social media campaign, and so we're really hoping that other people will start sharing our messages as we move forward, to let people know not only our current riders, but potential new riders, starting in September. Oh, sorry. The other thing that we're actually starting next week, is we want to hear our riders' transit story. So we're actually going to be handing out, these are flyer size, half-sheet size, to some of the people that we're talking to on the routes, that really have a great positive transit story to tell. And so we'll be connecting with them at a later date to do some photos, and maybe a write-up, or even a video clip, and sharing that on social media throughout the summer. We'll also be doing a social media campaign on this as well. For SACRT, oh, no, hold on, this is very touchy. Ah, it doesn't like me. So the other thing we're really focused on is training for SACRT staff. We started months ago with customer service, we thought that was definitely the first place we needed to get to, because they talk to our riders the most, besides our bus drivers and our light rail operators. And so we went in and provided them lots of materials and handouts that they can have ready for them, to talk to people as they come into our sales center. Here, we have a table set up. We also usually have staff there that can help answer questions for people that are coming in and buying passes. And then also, we created a booklet, you see on the right-hand side, for our operators. This is available to them for the most recent signup, and it gives them an idea of how every single route's going to change, because we really want to prepare them in plenty of time before the next signup comes, and also be able to educate our riders. We hear often riders will ask a driver something, and we want to make sure that they're aware of what's happening. And SACRT is hiring. As we're launching this new bus network, we want to make sure that we have plenty of new bus drivers that are out there for some of these new routes. So we're not only hiring for big bus, but also for our Smart Ride microtransit. As James mentioned, we are expanding, so we are looking for more drivers. All our postings for that are at SACRT.com/careers, and we're actually launching a brand-new online portal, where you can apply completely online, paperless, and that starts next week. So we're excited about that. Here's just kind of a high-level look at just a few of the items that we're launching this month and next month. So I did mention the signage on the buses. We continue to update our website. One of the tools that we're working on right now, we're calling the Future Trip Planner, and how this would work, there'd be a tool right on the webpage, where riders can go on, say where they are, where they're going to, and it can tell you what bus route you should be taking, starting September 8th and forward. So we're really excited about getting that tool up and ready. We do have a GM Transit Talk every month, it's an online chat, and so SACRT Forward is a huge part of that. We answer lots of rider questions during that. We are also doing a lot more presentations, letting people know about the project. We're also starting our SACRT Street Team, so we're going to have outreach staff, we're going to really ramp up and get as many people out on our buses as possible, and we'll be doing different pop-up events at different transit centers, and also just continuing to staff up for different events that we normally do, anyway. We're also creating new materials for a paid campaign, which will probably start in July and August. Next month, we're getting the SACRT Forward Outreach Bus out to our events, so you'll see a wrapped SACRT Forward bus rolling down the street, so we're really excited about that. We'll also do push notifications on our apps, we have an alert SACRT app, so we're able to let people know information about the new bus network right through there. We'll also be starting in June our electronic messages, and our public address messages at our stations, and we're also adding messages onto our buses as well. Also, we use Nextdoor, I'm hoping a lot of times people use the Nextdoor app, so that's been really helpful to kind of start that community conversation. And then we're also going to be working on letters and door hangers for people who are near new bus stops, and also discontinued bus stops, because we really want to make sure those people know about what's going on. So any questions for James or myself?
Questions from the council? Steve, you better not have any.
I don't have any. I've heard this a number of times.
I want to thank you for coming out, and it sounds like you've put a tremendous amount of work into this, and I think it's going to pay dividends. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if I could, thanks, James and Jessica, and Carmen for coming out to present. This redesign's long overdue. And September 8th, you talked about, how many emails, 600?
We had 600.
I think you're going to match that September 8th, when we make the change. And change is difficult, there's going to be some problems, but we're committed to, you know, solving them as we can, and you said we're building a network for future expansion, so as funding becomes available, we can build upon what we're doing. And thank you. I'm very excited about this change, like I said, it's long overdue.
Great, thanks for having us.
Thanks again for having us, for coming out tonight. Okay, that's the end of our presentations for this evening, so next item, please.
The next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
Okay, why don't we start with Councilmember Middleton?
Okay, a lot happened the last two weeks since I've been up here. I went to the STA meeting for updates about transportation and the funding for future projects, in place of Mr. Miller. Absolutely, it was a lot of fun. Cap-to-cap regional issues, we discussed transportation, housing, infrastructure improvements, and we got to talk directly with some of our regional representatives, and that was really interesting, to see that no matter what community you're in, the issues are pretty much the same all around our region. And I also went and judged the Leadership Citrus Heights Class Project, really, some really awesome creative ideas that came out of that. I was really happy to see a new batch of future leaders coming through that class. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mayor Bruins. Back in April 26th, on a Friday, you and I attended the ribbon-cutting for Big Lots' grand opening. Really, really clean store. I've heard, you know, some things about Big Lots, but this, I was really impressed with the store and the merchandise there. So if you haven't got a chance, go by and check it out. On April 29th, Councilmember Slowey and I met with Henry Lee, over a briefing concerning Saqog and some transit funding. On Tuesday, Finance Committee met, and that also was Mr. Slowey, and we discussed the two-year budget and the updated tenure model, and I believe that's Committee Council, June 13th, for our budget adoption. So it's looking good. Last Friday, attended the Sacramento District Attorney's Annual Public Safety and Community Appreciation Luncheon with Chief Lawrence, and the rest of the time, I was building a fence at home, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniels?
Thank you. Yeah, I'd also want to, excuse me, acknowledge my appreciation in joining Chief Lawrence and Councilmembers Miller and Middleton at the District Attorney's 20th Annual Public Safety Luncheon, honoring heroes. We heard quite a few stories about some pretty remarkable people, not only in law enforcement, but in other areas, and in the public, and it was quite a privilege and honor to be there. So thank you for that. I want to acknowledge that the San Juan High School varsity baseball team has made the playoffs. Their brackets will be announced tomorrow, so please go out and support if you can. The kids worked very hard to get in the playoffs, I think they ended the season on like a four-game win streak to make it. They had to win that last game, and they did it. And so if you get a chance, find out what day, we don't know yet, but, and hopefully go out and support that. I want to acknowledge that the Fresno City Council has joined us in opposing AB 392, and hopefully we will see some other entities join on board with that opposition also. And acknowledge that on May 15th is Police Officer Memorial Day, so if you get an opportunity to do something with that day, please do, in honor of the thousands of officers who have given their life in the line of duty. And then the final thing is, I noticed we got some of those teenagers in the audience again, and can we get one of them to come up and tell us why they're here? Come on, who's the leader?
None of us.
No.
That sounds like...
I can pick one.
I feel like I just got marked.
Yeah, he spoke up, he's the leader.
Oh, here comes, here she comes, there you go.
Thank you.
Hold on, you got to say who you are, where you're from.
Hi, I'm Blythe Statham. I'm a senior, along with them, they're all seniors at Bella Vista High School. And for our government class, we're required to attend one of these meetings to take notes, and then write about how it went, so.
Excellent. Well, you picked a very exciting meeting. We'll be done in about 15 minutes.
You're always welcome, thank you for coming tonight.
That's it.
Thank you. Okay, thanks. And I'll just wrap up. I did not have any sanitation board meetings this month since our last meeting. I have been out of town for the last eight days. I joined our city manager and our economic development manager on the East Coast, and we met with the new owners of Sunrise Mall, to take a look at, and have a discussion with them about their future plans for the mall in our city, and share ideas, and so we'll be, I'm sure, having more information about that as time goes on. But it was a good meeting, I'm glad we made the trip, and I think it'll be profitable. And from there, I went to Washington DC, and I joined Portia at the Cap-to-Cap meeting, which is actually, for those of whom you don't know, it's a lobbying trip that happens every year. It's hosted by the Sacramento Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce, and over 300 business people and public officials. Left Sacramento on Saturday, and ended up in Washington DC, and took a day to rest, and hit the ground running on Monday morning, and we were broken up into teams. I was on the ECA, excuse me, Workforce Development and Education Team, which I've served on in years past, and we had appointments Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday morning with our various legislators, key committee members, and we actually were able to have an audience with the Secretary of Education, Voss, to bring back to Sacramento what they have to say, and to share with them what we need in our community. So the side benefit of that, too, is that we get to know other people in the region, share ideas, learn from them, and then hopefully bring home things that'll work in our own community. And I just got back last night at midnight, as Portia did, so we're hanging on by a thread, so. Also, today I attended the Sunrise Marketplace Board Meeting, and it was a very, a very full meeting. We had a presentation by Sacramento Fire Marshal Lisa Barsdale, and had a discussion about requirements for special events, and interchange back and forth on how to make that run more smoothly. This is their 20-year anniversary for the Sunrise Marketplace, and so just want to put this out to the public, there's an opportunity for you. Couple things, one is, they have this promotion called 20 x 20, which is the opportunity to win $400 in gift cards, just by going on their website, shopSMP.com, and every month for the entire year, they are going to pick a lucky winner, and it might be you to have a $400 shopping spree. And then on June 8th, in collaboration with the Rotary Club of Citrus Heights, the Sunrise Marketplace is hosting Brews in the Burbs for 4:00 to 8:00 PM. They have dozens of boutique and designer breweries, and beer distributors and providers, along with all of the rest of the food and gala that will go with that. So sign up. Again, you can go to shopSMP.com for details and ticket information. And saw a draft copy of their annual report, which will be presented at the City Council in June. Also had a report from the city, from the city of Citrus Heights, Megan Huber, our economic development manager, and from our police department, who works very closely in collaboration with the marketplace. And that is, oh, one other thing, this is the final weekend for the spring version of the Citrus Heights Community Marching Band's Yard Sale, which is their big fundraiser that supports what they do, helps them buy supplies for uniforms, instruments, and all the other expenses. And it's on Linden Lane, I think it's $79.20, but you can't miss it, because there'll be signs directing you, and it's going to be going Friday, Saturday, and Sunday of this weekend, and they have a ton of stuff. So if you're looking for something, you can't live without, pay a call on them. Okay. That is all I have. Next item, please.
The next item is public comment. Members of the audience... The next item is public comment. Members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each, with 30 minutes being allowed for all comments. Any public comments beyond the initial 30 minutes may be heard at the conclusion of the agenda. The mayor has the discretion to lengthen or shorten the allotted times.
Okay, thank you. I have three speaker sheets this evening, and so, we'll start with Mr. David Warren.
Please excuse my appearance. I was in Southern California today at an administrative hearing concerning, uh, religious and prejudice and discrimination, and discrimination concerning state employee as to issues for, um, transsexual individuals and so on, being falsely accused of prejudice. And had I known I would not be here till 8 o'clock, I would have gone home and changed before. I was afraid if I missed the 7 o'clock-
Well, we don't have a dress code, so you're just fine, Mr. Warren.
Okay. I'm here tonight because, um, in the last several months, a mosque was attacked, a church was blown up, and a synagogue was attacked. On Monday night was the beginning of Ramadan. Last year, I came to this board and I said, "It's important that we recognize and represent and greet the Muslim members of our community, a minority group." And yet, again this year, the city council has failed to do that. It's upsetting to me that in a community with a broad spectrum of our population, Christians, Jews, Muslims, Buddhists, et cetera, that comes Christmas time, all of us will be saying, "Happy Holidays." And in one case, I'm sure, just to be politically correct, there's going to be someone who's going to say, "Merry Christmas," just to make the point. And yet, tonight, not one of you greeted the Muslim population in our community. It shouldn't be up to a Jewish member of this community to do that. But to all the Muslims in our community, I say to them, "Ramadan, Mubarak." And that should have come from you. I think you all owe an apology to the Muslim members of our community and make the point, not just this year, but going forward, that this not be forgotten again. It's important that you, as leaders of this community, remember there are children of tender age who look to you for guidance. Members have said, "We should respect authority. We should respect the police." But you're not going to get that respect unless you show the respect for these individuals in our community. We have young people here in the audience tonight. You're teaching them something. And what you've taught them tonight, I'm sorry about. So, I hope going forward, none of you will forget that that is an obligation of this city council, just as it is at Christmas time, to wish everyone a happy holiday. This year, the high holidays came and went, and not one person said, "Lashana, Rabbah." Happy New Year to the Jewish members of our community. Now, I don't care about that. I'm an adult. But there are Jewish children in this community who are discriminated against, just as the Muslim community. And yet, they look for leadership and they don't find it in the leaders in our community. And they are due an apology. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Ms. Gloria Dyer.
Good evening. My name is Gloria Dyer. Um, I expected my, uh, son to speak before me because he is, uh, it is the incident that we want to talk about regards his son and my grandson.
He's welcome to speak first if you wish. Okay, you want to?
He has some details.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Cecil Dyer, and I'm a longtime resident of Citrus Heights. I'm here today because I want to let the council know about the level of service my family received from the Citrus Heights Police Department last week when there was an incident between our neighbor and one of our sons. On Thursday, May 2nd, around 7:30, my next-door neighbor cursed and screamed at my six-year-old son, Ethan, which is a violation of Penal Code 415. My son, Ethan, was playing with his dog in the backyard at the time. And apparently, the dog nipped him a little harder than he expected, and he reacted by kicking the dog. At that point, my neighbor, who had been watching my son through the fence, climbed the fence between our yards and cursed and screamed at my son repeatedly. "F you," he said the actual word. "F you, I'm calling the police." My son was frightened and ran into the house crying. He ran toward the front to put some distance between himself and the backyard. My neighbor then went into his house, out through his front yard, crossed onto armed property, and came to our front doorstep, where he resumed screaming and cursing at my son through the screen door, since the front door was open. Uh, my, the neighbor's wife was with him, and she was also yelling at my son as well. My wife was there with a friend, and they were shocked and confused and scared since this seemed to come out of nowhere, and they didn't know what was going on. My son curled up on the floor crying and in a panic, and they continued shouting down at him while he was on the floor. They were about five to eight feet away from him, with only the screen door between him and them. The neighbors then went onto the sidewalk in front of our house and called the police and animal control to report that my son was abusing a dog. Penal Code 415 states that it is a punishable offense to use offensive words in a public place which are inherently likely to provoke an immediate violent reaction. And I think cursing at someone's six-year-old son is likely to provoke a violent reaction from almost any parent. And therefore, our neighbor's action was unlawful and merits a police report. Officers arrived around 5, around 8:00 PM, and I got home around the same time. And they spoke to us primarily about the alleged animal abuse, since it was the neighbors who had called them. We told the officers about the screaming and cursing the neighbors had done to my son. They talked to us for a few minutes, talked to the neighbors for a few minutes, and then left. Even though we described the neighbor's unlawful behavior to them, they did not inform us about our options for filing a complaint against him. I found out from elsewhere. They drove away and left a volatile situation behind them. I spoke to a CHPD sergeant after that, uh, about the situation, so, because my wife wants to file a complaint against our neighbor. The sergeant then promised me two things. He promised to send two officers to our home to speak to us again, and he promised that the officers would document what we told him about the situation. Neither of those things happened. Instead, at 4:44 PM, an officer called my cell phone, and after listening, listening to my narrative of the events, told me that I would need to go to the courthouse to get a complaint form. So, then, uh, yesterday, my wife and I went to the courthouse, where they told us that they didn't have those forms. They, and they sent us to the District Attorney's Office, where they said they didn't have the forms and that the forms should have come from the police station. So, the officer that contacted me either lied to me or truly doesn't have any idea where they can be obtained. My neighbor, I, I won't say he's a monster, because we've lived next to him for nine years with no problems at all. He's a military veteran, and I have a lot of, uh, military veterans amongst my family and friends, and I have respect for their service. But some of them have some trauma. And some of them, uh, one of their symptoms is intense anger that can be set off by seemingly petty situations. I think my neighbor is a ticking time bomb, because his reaction to my son kicking the dog, while it was bad, the reaction was completely out of proportion. He could have handled this by just telling my wife that our son had kicked the dog, and he may want to, she may want to tell him about that. Or he could have called animal control, but he wanted to look my son in the eye and yell at him to intimidate him and make him feel fear. When my son ran in the house to get away from him, he ran around to our front door to continue screaming at our son, along with his wife. When my son curled up in a ball crying on the floor, our neighbor and his wife still continued shouting down at him. Can I continue?
How, how much more do you have?
Minute and a half, maybe.
Can you wrap it up and then?
Quick, mhm. At no point did he show any empathy or compassion for this child that he was traumatizing. And he didn't seem to realize that he was overreacting. This makes him dangerous, and my family is living right next to him. Uh, yesterday, I just started taking my son to a therapist, because he's been thinking about this constantly, can't focus on his schoolwork. Last night, he started crying and wouldn't go to bed unless I got into bed with him. And my wife is also feeling stress and fear from the situation as well. So, if our neighbor loses control of himself again and acts his way towards someone in my family, this is not going to end well for anyone involved, because I'm not going to let someone just come and terrorize my family. So, if anything happens between us that makes the news, I want it to be remembered that I first tried to get help from the Citrus Heights Police Department. All I wanted was a police report and a case number about the incident. So, maybe if my neighbor saw a document with his name on it, maybe he would think twice about acting this way again, if he thought that jail was a possible result. And it's looking like we'll be moving forward with our other options, so that this doesn't happen again, since we didn't get what we need. Thank you.
Mrs. Dyer, did you want to add anything?
Yes, my name is Gloria Dyer. Uh, my husband and I, uh, with our family, have lived in Citrus Heights for 30 years plus. Uh, I, my husband and I, about a year and a half ago, moved to Roseville, but we still own several properties in Citrus Heights. So, we are very much invested in this community. And we have always had very good relations with, uh, the police department. In fact, until, until we moved out, uh, a year and a half ago, I was vice president of the Menke Area Neighborhood Watch. And we often had contact with the police, who would come out to our functions and did a lot to promote having, uh, a, a good relationship between the community and the police. And I have always spoke, spoken very highly of the police department of Citrus Heights. However, I must say, as my, uh, son detailed in the, uh, uh, incident that he described, I have been extremely, uh, disappointed in the behavior of the Citrus Heights Police in this instance. Uh, my, my grandson, Ethan, if you want to see him. Ethan, can you stand up for a second?
No, we see him. We don't want to intimidate him.
Ethan is six years old. He's a first grader in a school here in Citrus Heights. He's an excellent student, and his teacher speaks very highly of him, both in terms of his academic achievement and his behavior. He has never been in any kind of trouble, and he's one of the nicest little kids you would ever want to see. In fact, I'm a teacher by profession myself, and if I had, if I had a dream class, it would be full of students just like Ethan, okay? That's the kind of child he is, and I'm not just saying it because I'm his grandmother. Now, what I want to say in regard to the incident that occurred one week ago tonight is, as I said before, the, the response of the police has been extremely disappointing. Not only, uh, the officers who appeared on the scene and did not leave a report, but also the officers who were supposed to send someone out and so forth, and did not. And neither did they point a pathway for a restraining order or anything else to curb this violent re, behavior by this neighbor, okay? Now, we live in a world where it is in the news all the time about the, uh, relationship between police departments in various cities and minority communities. Now, I have always been an advocate of a strong police force, because our world would be complete chaos if we did not have plenty of good police. However, given this kind of situation, this is the very kind of situation that none of us should ever want to have happen. I don't want my grandson to grow up and think, you know, when I was six years old, the police were called on me, and, you know, when my grandparents and parents tried to come and correct it, nothing was done. And I ask you as counselors, uh, council members, what would you do if it were your child or your grandchild? Would you think it's okay? Let's just sweep it all under the rug? No, this is not acceptable. And I, as a taxpayer, am not satisfied to be paying for a, uh, police department that is not going to be responsive. And I don't think you either are contented to be, uh, upholding a police department that is not doing its job. Now, I'm not saying the whole department is that way. Again, as I've said, I've had many good encounters with the police of Citrus Heights. But in this particular instance, incident, in, instance, whatever was driving it, it was not conducted properly, and we are not satisfied with the result. So, what I request is that a full and appropriate investigation be conducted by the police department with the oversight of the city council, and that we be given a full report. This is not the kind of thing that we want to have go on. We don't think it's okay. This is not a light matter. My grandson was traumatized, in the extreme. In fact, he'd be over my house, doing his homework. He comes over there a lot of times to do his homework. And I couldn't, I could hardly get him to concentrate. He would just keep stopping and says, "Grandma, why did they call the police on me?" So, I'm saying, I'm asking you to do something about this. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Well, I, I want to thank both of you, you may be seated if you wish, both of you for coming forward. I am so sorry that your family has experienced this trauma, but I can assure you, it will be looked into. We have officers here this evening. So, if you'd like, you can meet them in the back, and they can take act, they can begin action with you right away. Okay, thank you. All right, do we have any other speaker sheets? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment and call for the next item, please.
The next item is consent calendar, item six.
All right.
Second.
Do we have a, a first? Oh, okay. So, we have a motion and a second to accept the- We have a motion and a second to accept the consent, the calendar. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, thank you. Any opposed? It carries. Next item, please.
The next item is public hearing, and there are none. The next item is regular calendar, item seven. The subject is accept audit services proposal, and the recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Lance Sol and Lunghead LLP for audit services.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Tammy Nosardi. I'm the Finance Manager with Administrative Services Department. And tonight, staff is here to recommend to the city council to accept the auditing services proposal presented by Lance Sol and Lunghead. Luckily, they also go by the initials LSL. To perform the city's auditing services for a three-year period with the options of two additional years. This multi-year contract will begin at approximately $40,000 for the first year and conclude just over $44,000 for the year five. The city released a request for repusal for auditing services in February 2015 and received five proposals for consideration. The proposals included in the cost to perform, excuse me, the proposal included the cost to perform the city's comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFR, the, uh, money purchase plan, a TDA report, and the single audit report. After reviewing all the proposals, staff interviewed three of the candidates. Based on their proposal and interview, staff recommends that the city council authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with LSL to begin audit services in fiscal year 2018, 2019. Are there any questions?
Anybody?
Second.
Thank, do we have a mo, did you move that? Okay, so we have a quiet motion and a quiet second to approve this item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. It carries. Thank you for your report. Next item, please.
The next item is department reports, in which there are none. The next item is city manager items, and there are none. And the following items, items requested by council members are future agenda items.
Does anybody have anything? Could we go to the other?
Yeah. Just real quick, I just want to, uh, publicly thank, uh, they, they, they left the room to talk to the officer, but Mr. Dyer and Mrs. Dyer for coming in. Takes a lot of courage to come down here and, and speak to the city council about a problem. And, um, I know that our police department is a great police department, and I know that nobody's perfect too. And so, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody either side or whatever, but I think sometimes these things get, uh, mirrored up in, uh, miscommunications too. So, I strongly appreciate them coming in here and talking. And I know that they'll get a good response back, uh, through the chief and, and whatnot. But if you have a similar type situation, don't hesitate to let us know. Because we don't want, uh, our citizens to feel as if we have that kind of police department. So, so, I appreciate- our citizens to feel as if we have that kind of police department, so, so, uh, I appreciate them coming in, that's all.
Okay. Nothing for future items? Anybody else? Okay, I think that's it, we are adjourned.